Jesus, the roads are bad, so where I was coming from. So this morning, I guess we can call the meeting to order at 11:01. And I asked Councilman Jumping Eagle if he could do the prayer, and then Councilman Canoria Jr. is going to do the words of encouragement. So go ahead, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, thank you, Counsel. Good morning, everybody. To Kasha, I want to say a prayer today for all our families, our relatives, everyone across the reservation.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Canoria Jr., do you want to do the words of encouragement?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My words of encouragement for today are, you know, like Councilman Jumping Eagle said, it's scary times that we have, but, you know, when you dwell in the dark long enough, you might lose yourself, but it's up to us to find the light within ourselves so that we can make each day better and better. And I see us doing that, and we have an opportunity to do that since Washington, D.C. has opened up. We have several events that are going to be coming up, and I just encourage each and one of my colleagues to make sure that we do the right thing and, you know, we go out and we seek better knowledge and a better way to do things and carry out business. And, you know, we got to look at ourselves, and we got to look at each other, and we got to think overall, what is the best thing to do? And that's my words of encouragement. Let's do best.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate the words of encouragement. Thank you, Councilman Jumping Eagle, for the prayer. Secretary, do you want to do the roll call?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Littlethunder is excused. Cora Whitehorse is excused. Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Here.
Gerald Canoria, Junior?
Present.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Here.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Here.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Present.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Here.
Richard Ironclad?
Here.
David Poyer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Here.
Jackie Sears?
Here.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Present.
Garfield Still?
Here.
Counsel, so we have a quorum of sixteen members present, two absent, and three excused. So thank you, Secretary. So moving on, approval of agenda, is there anything to add? Oh, go ahead, Councilman Watkins.
Yeah, I'd like to, before we approve it, I'd like to put on a curfew.
Okay, so there's a motion to add curfew. Is it discussion or just curfew?
There'll be a discussion.
Okay, and/or action, okay. Curfew discussion, is this seconded by Councilman Rodriguez? Any discussion hearing, non? Secretary, will you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Hoorah!
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Here, yes.
Gerald Canoria, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, ha.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Counsel, that motion passes unanimously, sixteen four zero gets, thank you, Counsel. Other items to add?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Steele, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. Good morning, Council members, and the executive committee members present also are listening to the audience, and all our people out there. I wanted to add the discussion of our missing people, our missing relatives, and our policy and our process. I know kind of an issue going on lately, and I think it needs to be discussed. You know, with this recent tragedy we had out here in Manderson, you know, in regards to a young missing lady, you know, there's talks that evolved from this with some community members, and we would like a few minutes of the Council's time to have a discussion on this matter, so I'd like to add that on to the agenda, Chairman, a motion.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston and Councilman Rodriguez to add MMIW discussion to the agenda. Any discussion hearing, none, or seeing none? Secretary, will you call a roll, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes, oh, here.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, ha.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Counsel, that motion passes unanimously. Anything else to do thirds hearing or seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Jumping Eagles, or seconded by Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman Dreamer. Any discussion on that hearing or seeing none? Secretary, will you call a roll, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if Finance Committee is ready to bring this resolution forward, but it was my understanding that this was passed from Finance Committee to Counsel for the Seventh Year Seventh Generation Program and resolutions to authorize the issuance by the Oglala Sioux Tribe of its grant anticipation refunding note Seventh Year Seventh Generations Project Series 2022 in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $700,000. I'd like to add that, Mr. Chair, for two-thirds item.
Counselman, is there a deadline on that? Deadline of yesterday?
I don't know, but Mr. Pili would like to address this, and he said he could be here tomorrow.
Okay.
And Mr. Gonzalez has prepared this resolution, so I think it's imperative that this be a topic for the Counsel.
Okay, and does it relate to law and order?
Are we going to open agenda tomorrow for items, or will I hold off till tomorrow?
Okay, we can do that tomorrow. Okay, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it. Anything else, any other issues relate to law and order that we need to add, hearing or seeing none? There's a motion to approve the agenda. Will you call a roll, Secretary? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, ha.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Thank you. And Councilman Yellowboy is present at the meeting at 11:13, and Councilman Watkins is in the meeting at 11 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, so now we have approval of the agenda. I guess the first is Ms. Marks, is she on? Go ahead, Chairman Watkins, we'll take your lead on this.
Okay, Chairman, on the agenda, we have one item for E, B, and D. I'd like to just go ahead and turn it over to him so I could get it out of the way.
Okay, all right, we can do it. So go ahead, Chairman Dreamer.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, for the first item for E, B, and D is the Resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe, to apply for the United States Department of Agriculture Reconnect FY 2022 Grant. Whereas Oglala Sioux Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December 14, 1935, in accordance with Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934. And under Article 3 of the Constitution, the tribal council is the governing body of Oglala Sioux Tribe. And as pursuant to the constitutional bylaws of Oglala Sioux Tribe, Oglala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article 4, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pioneer Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a federally recognized tribe, and whereas the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Rural Utility Service has announced the availability with $350 million in grants for tribal governments and socially vulnerable communities under the Rural E-Connectivity Program, the Reconnect Program. And whereas the USDA's Reconnect Program has funds available for grants up to 35,000 in socially vulnerable communities, which would need to be spent over a period of five years to develop a 100-MBPS Symmetrical Minimum Service Requirement in all proposed service areas. And whereas the grant funds made available under the Reconnect Program may be used to facilitate the expansion of broadband services and infrastructure in rural areas. And whereas the Reconnect Program will not provide funds for the ongoing operational costs of the system after the build-out and before the system becomes profitable, and thus the tribe must provide these operational costs. And whereas the tribe is in desperate need of broadband service and infrastructure on its Pioneer Indian Reservation for a myriad seasons, including for governance, tower house, emergency response, education, and business purposes, among other reasons. And whereas the tribe hereby itself certifies that, as of this date, it has an unserved population with no possible access to at least 25 MPBS download and 3 MPBS upload broadband speeds at affordable prices, and thus the tribe's lands. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe would benefit from the Reconnect Program grant funding to support its efforts to build out the needed infrastructure on the tribe's lands for inspection project and otherwise, so that tribal members, the tribal government, tribal businesses, and other businesses, and all on the Pioneer Indian Reservation can enjoy connectivity. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe desires to apply for a grant from the Reconnect Program for FY 2022, the deadline for doing so is February 22, 2022. And whereas the OST Spectrum Project presented the plan for the tribe's USDA Reconnect Program application to the Economic and Business Development Committee, explaining that the application will be for 100% grant at the maximum award level available to deploy a broadband network consisting of fixed wireless with tribe-owned fiber. And the Economic Business Development Committee determined that the presented plan for the application is in the best interest of the tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe does not need to secure permits for a project funded by the Reconnect Program because it is a sovereign nation that governs the lands within the Pioneer Indian Reservation. And whereas the USDA requires all applicants to the Reconnect Program to submit unauthorized representative request and resolution to access the online application and online financial reporting and compliance system. And whereas the USDA required authorized representative request and resolution must assign individuals to serve as a representative signature certifier and administrators on behalf of the applicant to complete and submit this applicant's application for the Reconnect Program. And whereas the representative signature certifier will have access to the USDA's online application for the Reconnect Program to provide signatures, authorized certifications, and enter and update applications, submit applications for consideration, and assign access to new users on behalf of the applicant. And whereas the representative signature certifier will have access to the USDA's online financial reporting system for the Reconnect Program to enter and update and submit compliance reports and assign access to users for grants awarded from the Reconnect Program. Whereas administrators will have access to the USDA's online system to enter and update applications, enter and update and submit compliance reports, and assign access to new users on behalf of the applicant. And whereas Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has reviewed the plan for the tribe's USDA Reconnect Program application for 100% grant application at the maximum award level available to deploy broadband network consisting of fixed wireless with tribe-owned fiber, and has determined that the presented plan for the application is in the best interest of the tribe. Therefore, be resolved, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council authorizes the submission of the tribe's application to the USDA Connect FY 2020 100% Grant for tribal governments and socially vulnerable communities at the maximum award level available, and that the tribe's application shall exclude the plan to deploy a broadband network consisting of fixed wireless with the tribe-owned fiber. And be it further resolved that the tribal council, Oglala Sioux Tribe, does hereby approve and consent to the USDA Reconnect FY 2022 application and the construction and operation of the broadband project it proposes. And be it further resolved, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is aware that the ongoing operational costs of the system after the build-out and before the system becomes profitable will need to be covered by funds other than those provided by the Reconnect Program grant, and that the tribal council has identified a portion of its American Rescue Plan Fiscal Recovery Funds and the Tribe's General Fund as potential resources of funds to cover such costs. And be it further resolved that the tribe will commit to net neutrality in all broadband projects funded by the Reconnect Program. And thus, the tribe will not block lawful content, application services, or non-harmful devices subject to reasonable network management, impair or degrade lawful internet traffic on the basis of internet content, application, or use of a non-harmful device subject to reasonable network management. Engage in paid prioritization, meaning the management of a broadband provider's network to directly or indirectly favor some traffic over other traffic, including through the use of techniques such as traffic shaping, prioritization, resource reservation, or other forms of preferential traffic management, either A, in exchange for consideration, monetary or otherwise from a third party, or B, to benefit an affiliated entity. And be it further resolved, the tribe commits to implementing strong labor standings, standards for broadband projects funded by the Reconnect Program through its tribal employment rights ordinance. And be it further resolved, the tribe will use any audit funding from the Reconnect Program to serve socially vulnerable and undeserved populations. And be it further resolved, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has assigned the representative signature certifier role to Darrell Hernandez, Legislative Lejon, to the President, who will serve on the tribe's behalf and shall be responsible for providing signatures, authorizing certifications, entering and updating applications, submitting applications for consideration, and assigning access to new users and USDA's online application system for the tribe's Reconnect Program application. Be it further resolved, Darrell Hernandez will continue to serve as the representative signature certifier of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, is awarded a grant from the Reconnect Program and will be responsible for authorizing certifications, entering, updating, and submitting compliance reports, and assigning access to new users and USDA's online financial reporting compliance system. Be it further resolved, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has assigned the role of administrator to the tribal president, tribal vice president, Kimmy Clausen, Casey Peterson, and Leslie Mastiff collectively the authorized representative who will serve on the tribe's behalf and will be responsible for using the USDA's online system to enter and update applications, enter, update, and submit compliance reports, and assign access to new users. Be it further resolved, the assigned representative signature certifier and assigned administrators will comply fully with the security procedures and policies of the online application system for the Reconnect Program and for the USDA's online financial reporting and compliance system. Motion.
Seconded.
Motion by Councilman Dreamer, seconded by Councilman Canoria, Junior. Any discussion on this hearing or seeing none? Secretary, will you call the vote, please? Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoria, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, ha.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Garfield Still?
Counsel, that motion passes seventeen four without voting, and Councilman James Cross is in the meeting at 11:20. So, go ahead, Chairman Dreamer.
I was going to say, thank you, committee and counsel, for all your hard work on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it. I think that's it for E, B, and D, correct? Yeah, okay, cool. So we'll move back to OST Law and Order Committee. I'm not sure you want to, okay, I'm not sure you want to proceed Chairman Watkins or Vice Chair Rodriguez, if you want to give an update. I know that the Law and Order Committee met for three days last week on issues ranging from, you know, all the issues that have been coming up that you might have seen on social media. There's been a lot of discussion, and that's kind of how we're here today for the listening public, is that we basically, Chairman Watkins requested a meeting to have the councils get together and talk about these issues of what's been going on, and that's kind of what we're doing here today, and just making sure that we're on top of this. So I'll leave it up to you.
You got Patty Marks on air?
Yep, she's here.
Patty, are you there? Patty?
Ms. Marks, can you hear us? You may need to log out and log back in, Patty. We see you, but we're not picking up your audio.
So Chairman, so she's having, she's going to try to log back in, she's having difficulties getting on. I'm not sure we want to move to the next item, or you want to have the chief kind of give an update of where we're at?
We're waiting for Patty, why don't we just go ahead and have the chief kind of give an update of where we're at?
Okay.
Because on the first, on B, I was hoping that Patty would kind of explain it to the rest of the council on that issue, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the chief, he can give update on, you know, where we're at and what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Go ahead, Chief Young.
Good morning, tribal council. Thanks for having me this morning. I wasn't really given an agenda to speak to, but I know there's plenty to talk about. You know, as everyone is aware, we've been having some horrific crime throughout the reservation, and I can give you my opinion, my professional opinion, what's going on. But I do need to start off with our staff, our law enforcement staff currently. As all of you are aware, every time I speak to this group, we are not funded nor near the need to respond adequately, and this board, or the Law and Order Committee, has addressed the current contract. We are We we are operating now on a, uh, extension, and we have requested a hundred percent of the the need. So our contract request went from five million to over nine million dollars in in the new request. And that re- that request included some specific, um, language for some special initiatives to include missing and murdered. And the drug initiative, um, that the Bureau of Indian Affairs receives specialized funding for. So we included, um, funding for that because, as you all know, with, um, the current response now. We've been doing that with our our limited staff, you know, with the six thirty eight staffing we have. Which is thirty three police officer positions throughout the the reservation. That is nowhere near the need, so. I I do have to say our staff is very, very professional and committed to come in and do this job day in and day out. You know, as. You can consider it as them trying to pull a rabbit out of a hat when they're doing multiple duties from collecting dogs to, you know, investigating the homicides. So, you know, last year, I know we we took in over a hundred and thirty three thousand calls for service throughout the reservation. For thirty three police officers. That in continue, that that number continues to rise along with our major crimes throughout the reservation. But let me be the first to tell you, that just isn't specific to to the reservation. Uh, I spoke to the sheriff and to the Rapid City Chief, and they're seeing the same type of crimes, so. My opinion is that I think we need to start holding people accountable, and and we've we've started those discussions. Throughout, uh, the Attorney General's Office and the Chief Judge's Office. We have a court system, but a lot of the times when we're dealing with these crimes, these guys are wanted from outside jurisdictions. And and it's that's that's sad to see that we have to create a case for them, and a lot of times it's a bad case. It's a horrific crime and, you know, if we had the new, um. The new day in law enforcement, we'll be, we'd be extraditing folks, we'd be working with our our neighbors. And I know that's a tough, um, discussion to have within this body, but I I think it's a need. I mean, we had a recent case, um, where we had to extradite a individual for, um, terrorizing an elder. Unfortunately, federal charges came in the meantime, but we, our hands were tied with the tribal law. And for our officers, um, who work this job day in and day out, eh, I have to really give it to them because, and I gotta commend them. Because they're. They're responding to the same crime day in and day out. You know, the offenders are getting arrested and they're having to justify their posi- their their arrest through our own court system. And yet, to have that person have twenty six DUIs and still not be in jail. It it's unacceptable, so. I can give you the numbers, I can tell you the stuff we've been doing, um, you know, we've been definitely proactive on on this side as far as going after money. You know, trying to hold the Bureau of Indian Affairs accountable, um, but. It it all comes down to, we need the more more resources. I think that's the first first thing that that we as public safety could use. And the second thing is just holding our own folks accountable. So with that being said, if if anybody has any questions, I I I wrote down some notes and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilman Carlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to do a comment before I can get into my speech here. I was wondering if, uh, my mic could be specifically for me because if I get a. Microphone from one of my other colleagues that tends to do campaign speeches, I might start that too. But my my question maybe, I don't know who could answer it. When the area director, Mr. La Pointe, was at our meeting the very last time, he said that Aberdeen had all these carryover funds that. The tribe was going to be able to access. And at that time, we pledged a lot of that money for public safety in the court system. I'm just wondering if that's just another fake promise of the Bureau of Indian Affairs? Or if that is reality, and if anyone knows anything about those carryover funds availability?
Um, I guess, uh, before, well, I guess two different topics, but, um, to your question, Councilman Carlo. We did inquire about that, and we haven't heard back yet for Mr. La Pointe, because we did follow up on that, and I did let Chairwoman. White Horse Snow, uh, Chair of our Finance Committee about that, if she had any requests. Um, but just kind of answer your question, but you still have the the floor, so.
Okay, well, I just wonder, you know, there there's so many issues too, not only with public safety, but at our land. Uh, office that we're dealing with at the Bureau Way, Bureau of Indian Affairs. You know, we requested and it went through committee that we request additional staff from Aberdeen to come down here and help us. So, you know, what reality really says here is that, you know, we talk about getting tough on offenders. Well, let's get tough on Aberdeen too. Let's make them accountable in some way, you know, to answer all the questions, the downfalls, the shortfalls that we have today. So I don't know if we'll be able to get the area director here. And whatever staffing over there is under the Division of Public Safety to come here to help address the needs that we have. In the shortfalls in funding where we're at today.
Uh, thank you, um, uh, so I got Councilman Jumping Eagle and then Councilwoman Carlo, uh, go ahead, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
So mine's really quick. Um, Mr. Young, I know that the issue of the, um, curfew is coming up later on in the agenda. Do you, what's your thoughts on that? Do you think a curfew would work? At this time?
You know, I I'm all for and support the the recommendation of a curfew, but we have to look at what is the 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 court gonna accept? Um, how are they gonna hold those folks accountable? For law enforcement, that gives us another method to, you know, make contact with individuals, so I'm in full support of it. Um, we do have some, um, new methods we're gonna try, um, to modify policing. Um, to provide extra patrol, so that would be definitely another mechanism for us to utilize.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Carlo.
Thank you, Chairman, good morning, council, and good morning, Mr. Young. Um, I just want to take this time to thank you and thank your officers for all the hard work that they do. Um, one of the questions we get in our district is, um, what is being done with meth dealers? You know, I I know there's ongoing investigations and many times you can't discuss those those, um, specifics with us, but. Can you give us some type of a? Some something, tell us something exactly, you know, what what is being done or what is going to be done? You know, I I know as soon as one is busted, another one pops up, so is, can you give us some kind of a? Answer as to what's being done or what's going to be done?
No, absolutely, thank you for the question. Um, when it comes to drug investigations, I'll be completely honest, um, it seems like we become dependent on the federal system. When I stepped into this position nine months ago, it looks like we put our faith in the task force. Granted, that's a great, great, um, tool, but we've started doing, um, some community impact deals where. Our priority is starting to be the the community, um, so we're taking, um, offering overtime to a group of folks because we don't have the staff. It has to be on a volunteer basis, and we bring them in, and we have a core group of folks who want to address the drugs. And we're looking in into those, um, those tips where we can go knock on the door, where we can go do traffic stops, where we can go show extra vis- visibility. And we shared a couple, um, of those successes on our Facebook. But to answer your question, we continue to address the drug problem from the possession all the way to the conspiracy case. And my priority is not the conspiracy, where we have great partners with the federal, um, task force. But right now, my priority is the community impact, and that's the way I relay it to my staff is. That we're gonna start doing these many operations, if you will, um, because we just don't have that that drug funding. The Bureau of Indian Affairs gets a a large amount of money to do drug crimes throughout the reservation, but unfortunately, we don't get that. You know, we don't get that support. Um, and I know they're understaffed too, they were when I left the Bureau, um, but. To add on to what we are doing to address that, we we started looking at the bonds and then the 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 law. You know, I know there's gonna be a new resolution presented to the tribal council where you're gonna have a possession type of. Um, charge that has different classes that work your way up to where you can be excluded from the reservation. And then the the distributor, that's a hundred percent across the board, is you can be excluded for distribution. Now, we've had that law in place since two thousand and sixteen, but unfortunately, we have never enforced it. We've never held anybody accountable for that. But the Law and Order Committee, um, tasked us to have a task force, and we've completed that for the DWI and for the drug crimes. And those are ready to come back to council. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Ironclad, Councilman Poyer, and Councilman Rodriguez. Oh, Councilman Canary, okay, quick, Councilman.
I was, um. I got some calls from elders in our communities, and, um, a lot of them are afraid, you know, and, um. I was thinking about Evergreen and, um. I was wondering why the police never go around Evergreen, our park in Evergreen. You know, and I think it'll probably make it a safer place, you know, if it were, they took some time to park over there and. Talk to some of the people around there, and I know that, you know, there was, there was a shooting over there and. The one person that's next, lives next to where the shooting took place is really afraid, you know, and. I see, you know, when I drive home from meetings, I see the police parked up on the hill, you know, by the. Manderson, you know, and I know that, um. You know, that's a good place to park because people speed through there, but, um, I think that, you know, it'd be good to. Park in Evergreen someplace, you know, and and just talk to the people, you know, and maybe ease their their. I guess their emotions now, you know, during this time. And, uh, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, I'll I'll definitely make a note of it, but on, just to touch on some of our recent staffing issues. Um, we we have been, as as I just stated, we were were short-staffed, um, but we've also been impacted by COVID as well, um, so. That's no excuse, but we have to try to manage the resources we have. Um, I did make a note of it, and I'll talk to the supervisors about the community policing. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, Councilman Poyer.
Just just a couple of questions on it, that goes back to, uh, Mr. Jumping Eagle said about the curfew or some somebody else. I was wondering if, and I don't know, he may answer this, how many drug dogs you have? Because if we start stopping these cars for, uh, a curfew, if we so set a a time. Can them drug dogs, are we gonna be violating anybody's rights? Because it doesn't make any difference to me if I could stop, say, after hours of curfew and everything, but. If a drug dog would come up and 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 so be it if we catch these guys, because the only thing where, is the way I see it is. On the missing people, the peoples that's lives have been taken, it's all because of drugs. And if we don't do something about the drug problem, regardless if it's cocaine or whatever, whatever the drug may be. But if we start throwing these people in, you know, if they're if they're just got drugs in their car, then. They need to pay to suffer the consequences. And I don't know if you know, but I I think Law and Order needs to, because there's an ordinance on if you've been, uh, convicted of. Uh, meth, I think it is, you could be excluded from the res, and it's been around for four, five years, maybe six years. How many people has? Have been convicted and that ordinance used on them because. And and I think it even says in our, if you was convicted and off reservation, you can't come to the res, but. As long as we're gonna have. Drugs controlling our res, then we have to be careful ourselves. Because. You, we. One of our relatives is gonna suffer of this, like right now, there's relatives that are suffering now because of the of the drug problem. But i- if you would, I I don't know how many drug dogs we have or we're violating anybody's rights to even have that dog smell that car.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, currently, the Department of Public Safety has two drug dogs, two certified drug dogs, um, and we look, we're looking to purchase a couple more. Um, but to answer your question regarding, um, the deployment of those dogs is. That if the officer has suspicion to believe that there is drug activity in that car, yes, they can deploy. Um, and that gives them right to search the vehicle if the dog alerts to it. So i- it's definitely a tool we we are gonna be using, and, um, we we do use like, utilize the dogs currently for our our drug investigations. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, then Councilman Canario Junior, then Councilman Youngman.
Good morning, uh, council and listeners and people out there, um. I I like our conversation, and these are really all good questions, but I I think we need to be having this conversation at like two in the morning when the people who need to hear it are awake. Because, uh, disinformation doesn't get passed on past, uh, two o'clock, so. Like if we were doing this meeting at two o'clock in the morning, the people who need to hear it would be able to hear what we have to say. Because they're all valid points to me, and and this curfew thing, I think, is needed. I know public safety is short, and they're doing everything we can, you know, they can, and I know we're doing everything we can as law and order to to help the people and. Get things done and make make things more safe for everybody. And my, in my personal opinion, and my pet peeve is. There isn't one person in the district that doesn't know who the drug dealers are, who the bootleggers are, where they live, who they're, who who or what they do. But nobody steps up for fear retaliation, especially with all the gun violence and everything else. And nobody takes anything ser- serious until it happens to one of their own. And then all of a sudden, it's, oh, council, don't do this, council, don't do that, but what 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 did you do as an individual to prevent that from happening? Because when we were, we were all still in TPs and wandering around on this reservation together as a people. We took care of each other, and we watched out for each other, and we kept each other in check. And that don't work anymore, and that, nobody does that anymore. I mean, you see the one guy, oh, look, he's staggering around, and that's on Monday. Tuesday, oh, look, there he goes again on Wednesday. Oh, look, there he goes again Thursday. Saturday, they find him half-dead and beaten, and then, oh, my God, the cops didn't do anything about it, this, that, and everything else. What did you do about it? What did you do about it? This is all of us, this is an all-of-us problem. This weight shouldn't be dumped on just public safety shoulders. There isn't anybody here that doesn't know who the drug dealers are, who don't know who the bootleggers are. But until it happens to your own, no one says nothing. I think that's what needs to change, not become a reservation full of narcs or nothing, because that's not what it's just about. This is about saving our niece, our nephew, other people from from these drugs that are hurting everybody. So this isn't all a public safety problem, this is all our problem. And it needs to be handled that way. So when we look at things, and we try to make decisions, and people are sitting there nitpicking at us at this and that and everything else, want to throw their two cents in? Where were you before? Where were you before it came to this point? So this starts at the house, at at home, and it starts with with all our neighborhoods, it starts in all our communities, it starts in our in our own townish places everywhere. This is all our problem. Not just a law and order or a public safety issue. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, appreciate it. Uh, Councilman Canario Junior and Councilman Youngman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chief. Glad to have you with us. I got three questions for you. I'm not sure how you'd like to like to answer them, just answer them the best as possible, I guess. How much funding do you believe we need to bring our policing staff up to fully operational? Because at the end of the, at the end of this month, we are sending a contingency to DC to meet with Deb Holland, and we would like to get all of our needs addressed.
Thank you, Councilman. And I I did submit a a contract proposal for for 100% of the need based off of the 2008 Taloa report that the Bureau did. Do I think we could use 10 more or 20 more officers? Absolutely. Because we all want to be in that place where we're proactive, we're doing community policing, where you you see an officer 100% of the time. But right now, that that contract is for, it it's for over $9 million, and that's to increase patrol substantially and as well as criminal investigations for these special initiatives. Does that answer your question, sir?
So is that, is that annually, or how, or?
So so currently, we get $5 million combined total throughout for both investigations, dispatch and officers. Right now, I I based that contract off of that that study. So the the $9 million covers 100% of the patrol, and and I apologize, I don't have the contract proposal in front of me. But I was the one that put that together, and I will be part of that team to go present that to the Secretary at the end of the month.
Thank you for answering that question. My second question is, a few months ago, we held a HHS meeting in which I asked you to attend, and the CEO of Housing, of course. Housing currently is looking for security officers in the amount of four per district. What do you, what do you believe our OSTDPS can do to utilize that as a deterrent? And how effective do you think that would be?
A good question, Councilman. And I I think that's going to be a a great deterrent, because I think just the visibility alone is going to be great. But there has to be some discussions, as we we talked about in that meeting. I have proposed to the Housing that we needed to talk before we deploy this, so we don't violate our people's rights. And the Housing has their commitment to 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 train and advise them of those rights and limits, and to open those doors of communication where they have a direct line of communication to our dispatch and to our officers. But we have to get there by communication, and we we just haven't met on that yet.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It just so happens, we have our CEO of Housing over here as well. But my my third question, I guess, is what else can we do to create tools to assist with handling our our meth epidemic? You know, before I mentioned, you know, we need a CCTV-type system so that we can track, but also, we don't want to violate people's rights as well. However, I think that would be a very effective deterrent in my own, from my own perspective, because we can catch them within a few minutes. But anyhow, what else do you think we can do to create tools for you to utilize?
Another great question. I think the biggest thing right now we're focusing on is training, getting our folks additional training to see the the new case law and the innovative techniques that law enforcements are are using to address the the drug issues. But I'm gonna have to fall back to accountability. I mean, that's that's where we can get our support, like, like we discussed earlier, that we've had a banishment law since 2016. We've banished one person since 2016. Our office has been part of over 50 drug conspiracy convictions since that time. But we haven't touched any of those folks yet. So I guess the accountability, I feel, is a big piece. It would give these officers a little bit more incentive to, you know, work those type of cases even more. And it wouldn't be so discouraging to see them not that law not enforced. And as far as technology, you know, in our, in our contract proposal, we requested for two drug agents on in that proposal through that ONDCP funding that the Bureau of Indian Affairs gets. The Bureau of Indian Affairs has has held that money tight and said it's noncontractable, but we are making a run to try to get it contracted this year to have our own. If they can't provide the service to us, we're going to try to propose to hire drug agents, because we're doing it out of our 638 positions. You know, and they got specialized funds to do this, this type of work. Within those funds, we can look at buying undercover equipment, but our technology far beats the Bureau of Indian Affairs, because we have the link analysis through our CAD system and the the crime mapping within the system. So it's great information to track the the current crime trends. Barring if we don't receive that funding, I would request that, you know, the body make a commitment to public safety and invest in your public safety outside of $638, if that are possible, to give us those resources to hire more folks. And that would be my recommendation, Councilman. Do you have, does that answer your question?
Yes, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate your answers. And, you know, I thank you for being here and presenting your information as well. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Youngman, online?
Yes, good morning, Council. You know, you touched on it, on the banishment. And, you know, I think we seriously need to start pushing that issue. You know, these lives that we lost and and these drugs that have been found, you know, it it's time to not mess around anymore, you know? We have that authority to start doing it, and I think we need to make examples of this, because otherwise, if we don't do it, these guys might go to prison, and they'll be back on our reservation here in so many years and doing the, maybe doing the same thing again. So for me, I I'm gonna do what I can to try to push the banishment. You know, it's, a lot of these deaths have been close to home, close to my home and my district, and, you know, it's hard to see the families go through that much hurt and pain, and, you know, we need to do something. We have that authority, let's, let's start it. Let's start the process of banishment. Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chief, I guess, and then I'll go to Councilman Yelboy, but so Chief, you're saying that, so the the current public safety budget's $5 million, and it's based off a 2008 study by the BIA, is that correct?
So the current funding level is for $5 million, but that's 1.4 million going to our Criminal Investigations Unit, which is new. And the rest goes to dispatch and our, our police with a large chunk going to indirect cost. Sorry, sir.
The only reason I'm asking these questions is, you know, based on, you know, just looking up a quick Google search, you know, you look at Pennington County, and their their budget for 2022 is $38 million for the public safety. Rapid City is $19 million. And, you know, they're a little bit bigger than us, but it shows you like the actual, you know, coverage that they have. And and you, and what you said is that community policing only works if you're fully staffed, is that correct?
You know, I I shouldn't say that if we're not fully staffed, we we should be able to do some proactive stuff rather than always being reactive, which it seems like we're just inundated with calls. Like, you did a comparison to Rapid City and Pennington County. Well, we got a larger call volume than both of those, those agencies. I think we have the highest call volume in South Dakota with operating with 33 officers that the Bureau of Indian Affairs thinks that that we should be able to do the job on. So, sir, to answer your question, you're absolutely right. I think we need a large increase, and we need to have a larger police force to do those types of initiatives.
Thank you. And the only reason I'm asking that is the public's, you know, wants to know these questions, but at the same time, putting it in context with the dirt and other jurisdictions, that's our neighbors, and just trying to help them understand that, you know, this is what it's funded at versus what you're telling us is reality. And you almost see it's like five times what they get compared to the issues that we had down here. So thank you, Chief. Councilman Yelboy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everybody. I do apologize for being late. I was on another Zoom call with the Great Plains Tribal Health Board, so apologies for that. You know, we're sitting here and we're having this, excuse me, having this conversation. And I I agree, this conversation needs to be had. I do agree that when we're talking about public safety, it's not only falls on our shoulders, it falls on everybody's shoulders to police themselves and to take that initiative to do what's right and not what's wrong. And I know it's troublesome because of the situation we have here on our reservation with multiple families living in a home and lack of resources and lack of the, the need for help. And, you know, that's something that, as far as I can remember, this governing body has tried to address. And there's something that we have to look at, and that's the funding. We, this governing body advocates for additional funding. I know we we put that on the priority list in our administration, and, you know, when it goes up to DC, we compete against every other tribe in the United States that is recognized as a federally recognized tribe for funding. Now, we had a superintendent here that said they had carryover money. And I, too, am frustrated with, with that. You know, my colleague here asked me, did we ever receive that money? And and sad to say, no. And I hope it's not hopes and dreams, and I hope we can have the superintendent here to come and address that because of our situation here with our law enforcement. You know, our law enforcement are trying. And I want to say thank you for the efforts you put in for looking for the young lady in our district. But I, too, agree with our, my colleague there from Ogallala, precedence has to be set. We we enact laws, and then it falls to the wayside, and we sit there six, seven years later. So I I believe that, you know, there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen. And I'm glad it happened the last three days in Law and Order, and there was good ideas that was brought forth, and that's what we're here today, to try and help the situation. And a lot of good work and time and effort and conversation went into what's being brought today to try and help the situation. But for those of you listening out there, you know, we had security positions open with housing. There's 36 of them that are open out there to help the communities within the cluster housing. And I was visiting with this, with our housing CEO here, who's willing to make, or who is making a presentation to help clarify what needs to happen to get those 36 positions filled, so we can help police our cluster housings. But I think the time for being rational is over. I think time to take action is now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, or Chairman Watkins, go.
I want to thank you, committee. I want to thank Tyler for bringing that up, and all the other committee members and council. You know, we put that banishment, I think, probably about six years ago, and it was never enforced. If we had it enforced, I think, you know, it would have knocked off a lot of things. But it really boils down to come right back into politics again, when it affects a family member, then they bring it back into the politics, and it gets knocked down. You know, I was sitting here thinking about that banishment on our mirror, on our drugs, but we also have to remember we have a bad man clause, and I think we need to enforce that. You know, the, our ancestors didn't put up with it when our own people murdered our own. You know, they would ban them off from, from the tribe. I mean, they wouldn't be part of the tribe no more. And I think that should be in effect, too. You know, it it's getting out of hand. Now, we, we, we get calls that at these funerals, you have these young guys standing up, shooting guns off, sitting on a hill and all that. And it's hard on our police. We are shorthanded, big time. I was talking to my colleague here, you know, years ago, and I was hoping we could bring that up one of these days, too, is that Navajo has their own police academy. We're the second biggest tribe. You know, we had one, and you had some good officers come out of it, but BIA, again, stuck the no ugly nose in it, knocked it down. You know, I'm like Davy. I got no faith in our superintendent. We're having problems on land committee, never shows up, never shows up for these issues that we're having today. You know, we'll take it to Washington, but, you know, we're, we're getting tired of the CEOs that they send in from the BIA, just here to mess us over. So I want to thank everybody that brought up the issues. I want to thank the chief and the police officers that are out there trying to do their job. But like Mr. Junior Rod here, I had to say, was a lot of it come back to our districts. They got to start standing up. They got to start voicing, not just sit back and let it happen and then come back and put people down. And I I think that goes for the whole reservation, you guys. If you look at Facebook, I don't have it, but my wife was telling me the other day that they're putting our president down. You know, we're trying, but they got to help, too, by interfering with investigations and other issues that don't help. But anyway, I want to thank you guys, and thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. And, you know, definitely, that's, that's one of the biggest things. And, you know, I I have full faith and confidence in our chief, you know, and what he's doing, what he's, you know, the vision that he has for law enforcement. He knows that system inside and out. And, you know, I'm willing to take those arrows. I mean, that's fine with me. But, you know, at the same time, you know, it's up to us as as Councilman Yelboy, is making sure that we go to DC, y'all have travel funds, y'all can make that trip. So, I mean, and we're putting it out there, you know, so. So so with that, Councilman Pujer?
You know, we brought up the area director and you, Mr. Chair, and I know we took action in Land Committee, that we wanted the area director here. But, and I don't know if that meeting's ever been set. Area Director of BIA, that is. You know, from what I know of how the structure is, the area director has no authority over the law enforcement money in the Great Plains area. There's a gentleman up there that calls the shots, and I don't remember what his name is, but when, if they, if that meeting ever materializes with the area director, we need that law enforcement person here, because he also controls the purse strings of law enforcement. And I guess the other thing that I want to mention is that this body took action. And I guess the other thing that I want to mention is that this body took action. And I don't know if it went anyplace else, is to close the area office. Because they take a majority of the funding for our programs, they take law enforcement, all our six thirty-eight programs, they take that money. But we're, I don't know if we're doing anything about it. And I know it was directed to go to the tribal chairman's organization. I don't know if that will ever went. But it's like we're sitting back and just accepting the matter that they're holding us hostage and making us fight amongst our own people and fight against the tribes. And that, that's, it's totally wrong, the, what was happening. But until we can get adequate funding for whatever the program is, but for law enforcement, if we don't do something about the drugs pretty soon, forget it. Because it always makes me wonder, nothing against the two young ladies that are sitting here at security, but what if somebody walks in this building with a gun and opens fire? Who's there to protect the same way as the tribal building? Anyplace, our schools? The drugs are taking over and we gotta do something. But nothing is being done. The kids know who's selling. And I know law enforcement, even if somebody just has a drop, let's take them to jail and do something about it rather than sit back and discuss it. I'm glad that this meeting's taking place. I think about this day and night. We all have grandchildren, we have great grandchildren, we have brothers, sisters, elderly people that we have to watch over. And if we don't do it, who gets the blame? The body, this body here, we get the blame. So it's time we start doing something and moving to get it done. If we need an ordinance or resolution on a curfew, like everybody's talking, let's get it drafted and adopt it today, so, or do something so we can start curbing this problem that we have. Something has to be done. We can't just sit here and talk about it and think about it and then get chewed out later. I don't get on Facebook either, but we're going to get the blame again. The social media will control some. We all know who's selling drugs. But when you bring it up, you tell, you're the bad person. So we need to move along. And I appreciate what law enforcement is doing. They're, like you said, there's only thirty-three of them. And it, it can't happen. There, it used to be when public safety was a existence, when there was review boards, there was over a hundred officers. Instead of increasing the funding, the funding went backwards. Because, do you know why? Because the Ogallawasoo tribe was moving forward. And the Bureau jerked the funding, stopped funding it. The bottom line. Because I was on the commission, I was on review board before, and that's what happened. Mr. Watkins was a lieutenant, now remember who else, if there's any other officers are on the boards, but that's what took place. And now we suffer for it with a large number of people here and we put the, we're put, every time we pass them, we blame the police officer. Well, the police officer, there's only so many of them. I mean, they can't, uh, I, I can see why they have a two hour, about a two hour time limit before they get, get to a call because they're really shorthanded. Thirty-three officers can't cover this reservation, it's over a hundred miles in direction each way. Thank you, and that's not a campaign speech, I just know something has to be done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Councilwoman, a little hot question?
Thank you for that, uh, Davy. I think that a lot of our, the things that we're talking about today in this circle, I think that we need to maybe come up with some type of solutions to it. You know, we can sit here all day and complain about what is happening across our reservation, but what is our solutions? What are our solutions to these problems that we're having? Now, today we're hearing we only have thirty-three police officers. And today, the public is listening to us and they probably hear that we have only thirty-three police officers to patrol the second largest reservation next to the Navajo Nation. You know, it really concerns me. At one time, we, we had a hundred something officers, then we had fifty-something officers. Now, what's happening? You know, we need to come up with some solutions to our problems. You know, we can go to DC and we can lobby for more funding for public safety. That happens, happens every two years. Some of us have gone there, we've lobbied for more funding. And now that we know that, uh, the DC offices are opening, then that's good. Send a delegation there. Start lobbying for more funding. You know, I think that, uh, we need to come up with solutions. You know, we have a task force within the Law and Order Committee, and only maybe two or three of us have been attending that. So Law and Order Committee, you know, some of you have said, I'll get on this task force and we're going to sit down and work on these banishment. We're going to work on all of these things that are being talked about today. But only three of us on that task force, along with the Chief of Police, the Chief Judge, the Attorney General, so many of us are meeting to make those changes to our laws. So if we're on the committee, we want to make these changes, we want to make changes to the banishment, we need to come together and do it and be serious about it. When it comes down to, uh, things happening on our reservation, you know, of course, we're going to get blamed. It happens all the time. You know, I'm not going to sit here and, um, say all the things that, uh, some of our colleagues are talking about is, isn't true. But the other day, when we had our code revision, you know, we talked about those things in that meeting. And the chief told us why and, and, and reasons maybe that people don't want to report it. Or be asked for an anonymous hotline or some sort so that our people can report it. You know, our own people are doing this to our own tribal members, and it's disheartening today that, uh, we as council are being told, you know, you guys got all this funding, but yet what are you doing about it? What are you doing for our people? Those are the questions being asked of me and, uh, Ms. Sears and Mr. Carlo. What are you guys doing? So, you know, today I think that, uh, we need to be united. We need to be united as a tribal council to say, yes, we do not want drugs on our reservation. We're tired of the alcohol issues, the drug abuse issues, and we gotta quit taking up for people that are being tested positive. Those people need need help. And if you're caught doing it, but by God, you better get some help. Otherwise, it's going to turn into something that is not going to be good. It's hurting our people today. This meth issue is really out of control now. And I think our people are telling us that. So today, we need to either come up with some solutions as to how we want to address this issue and not just be talking about it. Because we hear this all the time. And me sitting on Law and Order Committee, we've sat in three days of our meetings talking about some of these things and getting something done. And I just want to say that, uh, today our people are not happy. They're not happy with the fact that their loved ones are getting killed, innocent loved ones. Our people are no longer the, the person that you know when they're doing this, when they're taking this drug. But you know, there's a thing called intervention. As people, we need to think about that as a family. If you know your loved one or you know somebody is doing it, there's intervention. But we heard that also from Aunt Petaluta about the backlog of people waiting to go to treatment. So we sat there for three days. We had Aunt Petaluta there, we had, trying to figure out how we can address these issues. And I want to thank our Law and Order Committee because we did do some work. So either we come up with some solutions to our issues or it's never going to get done. And we only have so many months left in this administration. And our people are saying, what are you guys doing? What is council doing? So we need to be united in this effort to fight against drugs and alcohol and not be taken up for people that are doing it. Even when it comes to being your relatives, your friends, that's got to stop. When Mr. Watkins, our chair, said that, that is so true because we hear it. And we got to let our Chief of Police and the police officers be able to get out there and do their, the job that they were put in there to do. But with thirty-three police officers, that concerns me now because look how wide and spread out our reservation is today and they have to pat, patrol that. So, you know, let's come up with some solutions to these problems. Otherwise, we're just going to talk about it and complain about what's happening, but really not saying, what could we do about it? What could we do about it? We need to think about that. You know, I talked to Mr. Dreamer and Mr. Conoyer earlier. How could we address the issues of suicide? We've got suicides going on today. I talked to the grandmother in my district this morning before I came. Her granddaughter was committed suicide in Sioux Falls. I heard to hear all of that. And I felt bad, what could we do with our people? There's ideas that we had, we need to have something for our young people to come, go to. Recreation, some sort of activities for them after school. We don't have that. So I said, food for thought, let's think about that. Let's think about all of these things because it all comes back to, no time on their hand, they're going to continue to do what they're doing and it's just not good at all. So I just wanted to put that out there. We have a task force within Law and Order and we've been meeting, we've been working, but we need help. You guys come together with us and help us make these changes so that we can move forward. But we need to be united when it comes to alcohol and drugs and not just say, say it because somebody's going to come to you and say something otherwise and we're going to fall back on that. Let's not do that. We either are against it or we're not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I got Councilman Hawkins, Councilman Steele, Councilman Sears, and we have lunch. Oh, go ahead, Chief, sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize, Councilwoman and Councilman, that I didn't clarify the, the exact number of positions we have currently. And, and thirty-three is the baseline that the Bureau of Indian Affairs gives us to operate on. Today, currently, we have sixty, sixty sworn personnel from top to bottom. That includes our criminal investigators, our Indian Highway Safety Grant, um, and our, um, our RAMA funding. So the council has allowed us to overhire ten positions with using that RAMA funding. So we have a total of sixty sworn position with two vacancies as of today. So that, that's the correct numbers, I apologize.
Oh, thank you, uh, Chief. Uh, so Councilman Hawkins?
Uh, good morning, Chief. I just heard the comment on you're using RAMA funds? And also, uh, are you using ARP funds in any way, supplement?
Uh, yes, sir. We do have, uh, a million dollars for, uh, RAMA funds identified strictly for positions. That's to recruit and, um, hire new police officers. And, um, the ARP funding, we do have ARP funding, um, and have it obligated within our budget, yes.
I just heard from a constituent out in Eagle Nest District, and they're listening, they're listening to the, uh, conversations going on here. And, uh, at that time, um, I guess they even had day labor doing night patrol at one time? Maybe it was before your, before your time here. There were, they were doing, they were doing, their day labors, I guess, they were doing night patrol and they would report to the officers in the morning. And, uh, but, uh, listening to, uh, the Housing Authority over there, um, I guess he's going to do a presentation on, uh, this, this patrol, if you will. So I, I won't, I won't, I won't, that's as much as I'll touch on that day labor thing. And I, I thought it was an issue with insurance and if something should hap, happen on, well, they were on patrol and they got hit, I mean, they got hurt or whatever. But at that time, she said, no, there was nothing, there was nothing like that. So, just briefly, when, when I was a patrol officer out there in Eagle Nest, I used to, uh, the lieutenant used to say, save your gas, don't be driving around, watch your people. So I used to park right in the middle of the, the housing and sit there all day, all night because we had twelve-hour shifts. And, you know, it's, it, to me, it curbed while it was kind of like a prevention because they seen me s- sitting out there and looked like everybody kind of behaved because they seen me sitting out there. And I just wanted to bring that up, that, that worked for me, made my job a little easier, you know? That's all. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, and I, I will touch on that. Um, I, I do know what you're talking about. It wasn't a, a day labor, it was actually a neighborhood watch program. It, Mr. Bedhand, yeah, and it was, it was very good. And I know they, they took on some threats through some volunteer work. But yeah, that was a partnership between, uh, uh, some community volunteers and the police officers. So it was good, a great working relationship and they did a lot of reporting. So it, it was them taking on that, that responsibility as a community. And, and it's a great initiative because they would go out after a curfew, they would walk the communities and they would, um, turn people in. And very effective, um, but unfortunately, they started getting threats and, um, I think it died down. But it was a great, great community policing effort.
Um, I got Councilman Steele and Councilman Sears, and then we'll do lunch after this.
Chair, I'll go after, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Sears.
Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
I'll go after Councilman Steele, no, just kidding. Well, I just want to say good morning to everybody there and, and to the listening audience and, um, to the, uh, chief there for all the work that he's been doing. I appreciate it. But also, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, um, from our district, I know that, um, you know, our membership want to have, you know, they have solutions and they want to help, but we don't have, you know, we need to support them. You know, we need to support them and give them more, um, um, opportunity to have input on what's going on in the reservation because they know our districts, they know their communities. So that's something that, you know, we need to, um, encourage them to step up. We want community involvement, we want people to step up, but we also need to support them to do that. We want community involvement, we want people to step up, but we also need to support them to do that. So that's one of the things I wanted to mention. And also, when you do, when we're doing the banishment laws, we need to also include bootleggers. Because this has impacted our young people. And, and they don't care who they're selling to. They're not checking IDs, they're not doing, you know, checking to see if it's a miner or not. They're just out to make a buck. And they're putting our children's lives at risk and so, so is this meth. You know, and then we're talking about firearms. You know, do we even, do we even check these people when they're saying they're shooting off at funerals and things like that? You know, those things we need to look at too, we need to adjust that. You know, I'm scared that at nights, anybody can come into your home nowadays. They could do home invasions. And people that are carrying these rifles and guns, you know, and with this meth, they're, they're high on meth or something, that, that's another thing we have to address. So there's a lot of work to get done, but we need to sit down and make sure that there's things that we can do because a lot of people want to help, but also how far can we go? You know, just like Mr. Poyer said, we want to do stuff, but you know, we don't want to violate someone's rights and then they end up getting let out of jail because we made one mistake. We got to do it the right way. And I think, you know, our district, you know, they want to utilize, we have buildings that were purchased with COVID dollars. And they want to utilize them to help out with security, with other things. But they're just sitting there vacant. And the tribe has controls over them right now. And those were supposed to be turned over back a year ago. You know, back in, I think, two thousand twenty. But, or twenty-one, yeah, twenty. And still, the, the tribe has controls over those. So you know, at this point, I was asked, you know, to make a motion that we authorize or give those buildings back to our districts now so they can open them up and start utilizing them for, you know, for the, for the use of our district needs because they want to start helping. So you know, that's my motion and I hope I get a second because it's been going on for some time. We've been asked to do that and I don't know where it's been going, but we need to get that done. That's a motion I want to make.
Councilwoman, would you clarify that motion a little bit?
I wanted to make a motion to turn those COVID, those buildings, those, our Waukesha district anyway, purchased buildings, trailers, mobile homes to help with COVID. And especially with security during this time. So that, my motion is to turn those buildings over to the districts. Because the tribe has been utilizing or has control of them, but has not been utilizing them. And we need to get things done in our districts. So that's my motion. Turn them back over to our districts.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to make sure you clarify that. Okay, so there's a motion made and Secretary, did you get it? Okay, is there a, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston.
I do want to say that we did question the use of our buildings in Waukesha district. And I did talk to the executive board, I did tell them this. The treasurer said that there's nothing stopping you from utilizing the buildings, you can utilize them. But right now, today, all nine districts purchased buildings or whatever through the COVID funds. If you did, that property is still an inventory of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And I think we're all sitting here shaking our head that we know that. Is what Mason had said, it still falls under the inventory of the Oglala Sioux Tribe because we are paying the insurance of these buildings. So I didn't bring that up to our executive board. And I think there's no, there's no, no stopping them from using the buildings. Just recently, we passed an ordinance which says, I can't remember the number right off, Stacy, but it's the one where the districts need to present a proposal, a budget of saying what they were going to do with the remainder of their COVID funds, how they were going to use it. Now, two weeks ago, Lake Creek District was the first ones that brought that forward in Finance Committee. We approved it and forwarded it over to the COVID office, Ms. Tashina over at the COVID office. So now they're utilizing their funds based on that ordinance. I brought this up to our executive board the same way. All of our districts have to do the same under that ordinance. I think it's twenty-two dash, I can't remember right off the number. But it does say that in there that they could use the funds. They got to submit a proposal to the Finance Committee. And, but according to the treasurer, that was one of the things he did mention, what to me was the buildings all belong you, through the district, but the tribe is just an inventory over it. It's not saying you guys can't use them, you guys should, you could continue to use them. But I think what the holdup was, was the COVID funds. So I think there's some things, I think I have been addressing to the executive board. Mr. Carlo called me yesterday, we talked about, we do have some things and I don't want to go off subject. But right now, today, if the treasurer would come on or if he is on, you know, those are some things that need to be probably addressed to the districts. Because the, there's no, he said, there's no stopping you guys from using it, they can use it. But it's just that we have inventory over it under the tribe and we are paying the insurance of it, of these buildings. Because it's under the tribe. So I just needed to share that today with the council today that it comes back on our district executive board to start maybe meeting and getting some of this stuff done. But you know, that's the reason why I think one of our executive board members is asking that we give the buildings back to the district under, you know, just passing it. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels, I don't know if you guys have buildings in your districts, but we need to we just need, that's what I needed to follow up. And if Mason is on, maybe that's something he could answer.
So are you going to second that based on?
I could second it, but I don't know if Mason wants to address it first.
Okay, so the motion's been made, seconded by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston. Okay, and Councilman Steele. Mason, did you, sorry, Treasurer Bigrow, did you hear the conversation? And do you want to address that?
Chairman, I hear this is all finance issues, you deal with it tomorrow, this is for law and order.
Okay, so is that a point of order?
Yeah, point of order.
Point of order, okay. So Councilwoman Sears, can you tell me how this relates to law and order issues?
It relates to our communities and our districts that want to get involved with, you know, the security of our people. So this plays a big part with this COVID happening. And, you know, with the security that's needed. This was part of the Waukesha district's plan when we first received the funding. We had to have a plan in our district and that was part of it. We were supposed to house our security in there. So, you know, that's, that's something that our district wanted to do, but funding was taken back and given back to the, the tribe. So they weren't able to fulfill that part of it. But our district can ensure the buildings, we were told that. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make that motion today, so we can move forward. You know, we're always having this red tape, just like everything else. We need to just empower our districts and let them do things now. Thank you.
And Councilwoman, did you talk with Chairman Watkins about this when they were meeting last week about getting this on this agenda today?
No, we haven't because, you know, the, in light of what's happening, this tragedy, you know, nobody has time to really sit down and meet on these issues. So we need to move quick, we don't have to be sitting waiting for meetings. We're having, we're supposed to have a meeting today with law enforcement, our Law and Order Committee. But here we are having a council meeting, so I feel like this is the time to start bringing it up.
Okay, so Councilman, in the future, if, if you visit with the committee chairs, especially about these kind of issues. And, you know, there, there is, there was ample time last week to, to address this, I think they met for three days. And I did see you at, at the meeting on Wednesday, I believe. But I'll allow this to move forward.
With all due respect, you know, you're letting everybody else bring up their campaign speeches here and, you know, addressing everything under the sun. But when I talk, I have to take it back to the committee. Okay, I'll do that.
No.
Checking her motion.
Yeah, the, the motion's been seconded, so, so, Councilwoman, so I'm just making, making sure that, you know, we're having a, a meeting. And, and these issues are discussed in a timely fashion, so that, that's all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to limit what you're saying, I'm not trying to debate what you're saying. All I'm trying to do is make sure that we have a healthy conversation and it's done in the process and all that. So, so that, that's where I'm coming from, Councilwoman. So I guess, having the motion been seconded, is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, Secretary, we call it roll, please.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Not voting.
Gerald Conoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Malkin, Senior?
Not voting.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Not voting.
Ron DeBray?
Not voting.
James Cross? James Cross? Ella Jean Carlo?
Not voting.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Dillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, ha.
Michael Carlos, Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior? Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion does pass ten to seven. And Council, just let me remind you, there is an agenda that was set. I believe at the beginning of the meeting, Councilman Carlo did have an issue, but he took it to finance tomorrow. So, and, and this, so issues related to law and order, that's what we're working on. So that, that's why I asked those clarifying questions, so that's why I'm trying to make sure. But it was understood that, you know, we could have did some of this stuff at the beginning when the agenda was open. So again, thank you for that. So I think, Councilman Watkins?
I know it's time to eat and stuff, and I talked to Ramona and the chief. If it's all right with the council, that we'll bring them on after we're done eating and to discuss the security from the housing and with the chief.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we can have lunch, Councilman, Councilman Ironcloud, do you want to do a meal prayer?
Chair, did I stow the floor or no?
I'm sorry, Councilman Steele, go ahead.
Um, no, I'm sorry, you guys, if I take up a little bit more of your time, but, you know, in regards to this, you know, with the chief of police, you know, I want to, I just want to personally thank you and your law enforcement officers. You know, we've, we, my district been getting hit really hard when it came to a lot of issues and tragedies that's been coming up in the recent few months here. You know, I'm so thankful that, you know, with the quick response, we, we had people that were apprehended and, and, you know, they're, they're going through the process. And it makes my community feel a lot safer. And I, I hope that, you know, as a, as a community, you know, we, we, we had a, a walk, a prayer walk in, in Manderson. And, you know, we, we want to, we want everything to stop. We, we don't want people to live in fear. We have elders and women that are going to sleep living in fear and, and that's not right for our people to live like that. You know, in Wounded Knee, I seen a video where a young boy got hit with a golf club just recently. You know, we have all this stuff taking, taking place in our communities and, and we know it's not good. And with the lack of officers, you know, it really is up to us as, as individuals to, to really take back our communities. That's, and that's what I've been, you know, putting out there with my own community is it's time for us to tell these people, we're not going to put up with it anymore. And we're going to take, take our community back and push them out. And so I, I really support, you know, what Mrs. Sears said about, you know, listening to our community people, taking that advice because they're the ones that live in this, this, these, these situations every day. They live in those situations, so we need to, to go back to taking that advice from our people and, and come up with something that can help. You know, anymore, you know, we, we have our, we have our, our Tokala societies. You know, we have our traditional people out there, our traditional way of, of life that we're not even utilizing. We're so worried about all the violations, civil rights violations and whatnot that we're, we're okay with these people that are harming our communities, we're okay with them violating our daily lives. We're so worried about violating their rights, which is not right. It's not right for our people who want to live in peace. And so it's time for us to put on a, a different way of thinking. A different way of thinking and not, not necessarily this, this, you know, everything has to be, you know, the, the, the law enforcement. You know, we could go back to our own culture, our own ways and come up with something that would be a lot quicker. I, I would say it would be a lot quicker and a lot better for our people because our, our people in our communities, they trust each other more than they would, um, law enforcement officers, and that's the truth. You know, this recent tragedy that happened, you know, I want to thank my community for stepping up. And they really helped that family, they really did. And I think without their help, we wouldn't have got that, that far that quick. And I know we're worried about sitting in meetings and whatnot, working on these policies, but, you know, some of us are actually out there with the people doing some work. And that's where I was, the, the three-day working session you guys had, I was out helping the family out there. A system with looking for their relatives. So there are issues at hand that I think we really need to focus on. And it's time to put on a thinking, a different way of thinking, a different ball cap, rather than just this, I, I don't know how you, this IRA government way of thinking, sort of say. Where we're worried about policy, we're worried about these, these laws that protect individuals who are doing harm to our people. Like Mr. Poyer said, what's wrong with running a drug dog through these cars? Are we, we're worried about violating their rights, but we're not worried about our people that, that are getting harmed by alcohol and drugs. That's why I said we need to put on a new, a new cap, a new way of thinking and really putting our people first. And that's, that's why I wanted to talk about that issue, which I will later, but, you know, I just want to encourage us to, to do that, you know? And, and we talk about not working together, but, you know, really, we, we let this politic, this political circle divide us. We let the outside individuals that, who always have their hands and, that want to have their hands and split in the circle, we let them have that. And it really affects us in a negative way where it impacts our people. So I, I, I agree with Mrs. Weston when she said we need to start working together, we really do. And I'll say it, you know, we're, we're worried about, we need to, to, to come up with policies that are, are more about life over policy. Some type of measure like that where it, it's a no questions asked, where we're just, we're really, and, and I, and I know and, and I, and I know we're worried about the law, stepping on our laws, but, you know, our lives are more important. The lives of our children and our women are more important. So that's just what I wanted to say, you know, I, when my issue comes up, I'll, I'll, I'll bring up a lot more, but I, I just wanted to say that much, you know, that I do appreciate what you've done so far, Chief. And I, I appreciate it a little more if we could get more coverage of Wounded Knee. You know, we have, I get daily reports of people bootlegging, and that, that's what's causing a lot of the violence in that community. So thank you, Chair.
Okay, so with that, Councilman Ironclad, do you mind doing the prayer first? Thank you. Minutes, so about one, one twenty, be ready. Thank you.